I'd like to call the Word Section to Order for September 28th, 2020. We are all here. Well, Mr. Kirk, please give information on how to participate in tonight's meeting, please.
Sorry, ma'am, I'm just a little bit behind here. While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social distancing. Seating is generally available on a first come basis, but meeting attendees will be cycled in and out if necessary. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Members of the public may still participate in the following ways: they can view the meeting using the Granicus or Legistar link, and they may also contact the mayor and council at any time prior to the meeting at gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. For this item, city council will receive an update on the evaluation process work of the Judicial -- well, there we go, Judiciary Advisory Committee provides direction to staff. Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett will present. Lyman?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're here to get direction and feedback on the evaluation process for the presiding judge, and also to set the Judicial Advisory Committee up for success and ensuring they're aligned with council and delivering council's needs related to the process. Tonight, I'll walk you through very briefly just where we're at with the process of getting the committee up and running, and talk more about the process itself and getting council's feedback in that regard. So, very quickly, just looking back, back in January of 2019, council requested the formation of a Judicial Advisory Committee. In November of 2019, council adopted an ordinance to establish this committee. In August and September, most recently, we interviewed and identified the Judicial Advisory Committee members, and they were appointed at the meeting last week. Today, we're here to get council's input on the process, and we'll have our first Judicial Advisory Committee also on Wednesday of this week. So, this is a great opportunity to get your feedback and take that to the advisory committee as they set out on the work that they have been embarked to do. The -- very quickly, our purpose here for the committee, it's Advisory Committee, they're a volunteer committee to assist council in the process of judge appointments, reappointments, development of performance review criteria, conducting performance review surveys, and providing performance review feedback. The appointments and reappointments are plural. Certainly, at some point in here at Goodyear, we'll have more judges, perhaps in our court, municipal court. So, what we're establishing is a process that will carry us through in how we evaluate not only our presiding judge, but judges in the future. So, as we think about this process, we should think about it holistically. Of course, our primary focus today is the evaluation process for the presiding judge, which is going to occur in January of 2021. The structure of the Judicial Advisory Committee is two presiding judges, two Bar Association of Arizona members, three citizen members. The presiding judge will be there for -- as a non-voting member on all aspects of the process, with the exception of reappointment and the appointment of the presiding judge. And then, I'll also be a non-voting member, helping guide the committee. I think it's important to note here that, as we establish the process, the presiding judge is going to be involved in the process development, however, will disengage once we actually get into administering the process. So, here's really the meat of what I want to talk about, and I've already gotten some feedback that I'm going to pass out from council. Before I get there, though, I would like to just walk through where we're at here. And this is both a timeline and a guide that's been developed to help the Judicial Advisory Committee, also to get feedback from council on aspects of the process that you'd like to see. So, in the first part there, September, October, again, we're here to get your input. We will then take your input to the Judicial Advisory Committee, and they'll begin to finalize the components of the evaluation. Many of the components of the evaluation are built around processes that have been in place for a while. We're leaning heavily on the American Bar Association. They've got great information and background on judicial evaluation processes, and largely, these processes are built to provide the required level of judicial independence. But this is council's, ultimately, council's evaluation process, so council plays a role in that process. So, I'll start at the top here, and these are typical evaluation components that are recommended. There's a presiding judge self-evaluation. There's courtroom observation. These are all things that would be done by the Judicial Advisory Committee. There's an attorney and prosecution survey, so these are surveys that are going out to people that have been seen in the court or the judge has actually interacted with. Likewise, with jury and witnesses. And then, the court staff survey. So, in essence, it's a 360 evaluation to get feedback from all individuals who have interacted with the judge. These surveys typically focus on integrity and impartiality, communication, professionalism, professionalism and temperament, and administrative capacity. So, they're looking at some specific areas that these individuals would have either knowledge of or observe, and that information is administered by the Judicial Advisory Committee. From a timeline perspective, what we would be looking at is this process to begin in November. They would send these surveys out, they would collect the data. Our recommendation would be, and these processes vary from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I should also add that we have looked at other jurisdictions in our benchmark cities to see how they administer these processes. But the judge within their self-evaluation would sit down with the Judicial Advisory Committee, provide feedback on the work that's been done in the court. The Judicial Advisory Committee would actually sit in the court and observe, and they would collate all this information. And once it's synthesized, they would bring that to council, also with a recommendation as to whether they would recommend reappointment or not. Council would then take that information and conduct a performance evaluation. So, I think now is a great time to pass this out. Councilmember Stip?
Thank you. Oops, sorry.
If?
Thank you. So, this is from Councilmember Stip?
Yes, Councilmember Stip. So, some feedback in terms of what he'd like to see in the evaluation process. So, that's what we're here to discuss today. I'd like to -- I don't know if I can get Elmo up or not.
Well, did you ask us to do this? Because I missed that homework assignment.
There was not a homework assignment. There was -- but the purpose of our discussion today is to get feedback. So, he's provided his in writing, so I'll take any verbal feedback.
Yeah, what I did, we were doing this for another client, for attorney, city manager, and the presiding judge. I just grabbed what we did for a client and just provided it as a starting point for conversation. That's all it is. It's not a...
We've done this for city manager, too. I've never seen it.
No, no.
He was.
We were, our company.
Oh, your company.
Was doing work for another municipality.
Got it, got it.
This was just the work product in no particular order.
Okay.
That came forward, rather than us sitting here going, "Well, I don't know, what about this? What about that?" I just...
But we don't have to adopt this. I mean, it's just your suggestion.
It's not even my suggestion. It's just a starting point for conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Rather than us just throwing darts in the sky and hoping that something lands.
For the purposes of discussion, and I should add that the information that I provided in the process that we're recommending, all of that, it's also open for discussion. And what I really wanted to point out here with the document that he's provided is, there are several components of a performance appraisal process for the judge. And looking back on the charter officers, I think council obviously has some things that they view and that they can observe. There are some things that you're going to get from a survey process that look into a number of these areas. So, as we're looking at the first aspect of what he broke down, which would be the organizational managerial effectiveness, you're probably not going to get some of those areas from the survey. The budget, you're not going to get from the survey. But the provisions of judicial services, likely, you're going to be able to glean a lot of information from the surveys, and then the courtroom characteristics as well. You'll glean a lot of things from the survey. There is direct information related to communication within surveys, so you're going to get some feedback. But there's another side of communication, which is communication with council. So, and then, personal attributes. Again, you're going to glean some of that from the survey and the data that's provided. But council also has certain needs in these areas. So, more than anything else, I wanted to just provide this as an overview to say that there are some elements that council will need to consider to bring into the process. In our -- historically, for our presiding judges, council has had a meeting for the evaluation process, and we have not had a form, an evaluation form, related to that the judge has presented information. So, one of the things that we need to contemplate is whether you want delivered to you, along with the recommendation and a collated set of data, is, do you want an evaluation form to complete? And I think that's a question for council. Or will this be more of a narrated order of, this is what we've done in the court, and council is ultimately going to make their decision based on the information that they have?
It's a lot of information on two pieces of paper, a lot of questions. So, how do you, in the business, summarize? Can I? Yeah, Sherri, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for doing this, and thank you, Bill, for putting a lot of this out, because it's a process. My first observation is obviously with regard to the surveys. I fill them out every time I've heard judge, when they go up, especially for retention for city court or for either county or court of appeals, I get a survey. They usually email them to me. And there's usually, like, basically, two different surveys that go out. One is to, they don't separate prosecution from defense, because that could kind of be a -- if the prosecution gives me high marks, you know, because I know they're going to return their survey because they're right next door, that's going to sway it. So, it's usually just attorneys are one survey, and then, participants or litigants and jurors, those would be another survey. And so, also where it says the police department, I don't think the police department should be rating the judge.
Neither.
That one, I think you kind of leave out, because you do have a possible potential conflict of interest, you know, because the police officers are here, you know, they're going to relate, and if you rule against them, you could have, not necessarily the city of Goodyear, but overall, I think that's a, not a good thing you really want to bring into the process if you want to be at fair. So, they don't usually have that, at least in Arizona, where the police officers are rating them, the police department. I think that can go in the administrative section, the contact and everything, but I think for any surveys, we want to keep them out. I don't know if I want a whole nother evaluation to do. I personally would like to get the surveys and the data from that were collected. My only concern is, even if we do email, are we going to get enough of survey samples since the courts have been hobbling along since March? I don't, I know they're trying to keep going, and they've been keeping us more going than other courts, I will say that for them. They haven't gone dark.
You mean information from the courts about the individual?
Yeah, if you should get it to the participants or to the attorneys or anybody, because COVID has just really knocked it down. You give it a try, but I think we have to consider that when we look at it, that we may not get what we're looking, as much information as we're looking for. Like I said, Goodyear's actually stayed open and done more work than other courts have, and I'm not going to mention any by name, but just in general, I will have to, you know, say that. So, you might get a bigger sample, but just with COVID, email's probably your best shot, but I don't know if we have email addresses for people, because what they usually do is they will give you the attorneys, even the attorneys, but sometimes they'll mail them to me where I'm a court-appointed attorney. But if not, they'll usually just email it to me, because I'm on their email list for the attorneys, and the litigants, they will either give them a form to fill out, like, you're done with traffic court, here's your form with a stealth trap, return envelope, or here's a log that you can log on to, you know, here's the URL for the survey.
Okay.
I don't know if we have time to get a good sampling now, but I don't know. That's just my thoughts.
I appreciate the feedback, and I do know that the processes rely heavily on getting feedback back on the surveys. I think building in an ongoing survey like that is certainly something that I think we'll have discussion on for consideration, so that you're getting it throughout the period of time as opposed to the end of the process. And I think we're, obviously, we're where we're at. So, our goal would be to provide council with as much information as we possibly could and collate that so that you can see what you have.
Joe?
First, I want to thank Bill for putting this together. I think there's a lot of good questions on here for any department head, period. I mean, when you look at organizational management effectiveness and budget, which is always close to my heart, are two good areas that you want to know how your department head's doing. Any department head, whether it's a city manager, whether it's a city attorney, or whether it's you, Lyman. I mean, there's some good questions in here. So, I appreciate the research that Bill has done to get a overall flavor, because you're going to get perspectives from the attorneys, and you're going to get perspective from those that come before the judge and whatever. But I'm just as interested in budget and the organizational management effectiveness as well, from my perspective.
Ollie?
Well, mine is really simple. I didn't come with a bunch of papers and things, because I have full confidence in the committee we have put together, because we have attorneys and we have sitting judges. And they are very familiar with what the judges are supposed to do. I guess you're asking us to hone in on what is specific to Goodyear, I'm assuming, because they'll do a broad overview of whatever. They know what to look for, and they know what judges are supposed to do and not do. And since we have never done this before, because our last judge was here 20 years with really no oversight, this is all new. So, I'm very comfortable with what they're going to come forward with, and I think for the first year, we may have to rehone some of our requests later on, but not necessarily right now, because, like Sherri said, with the COVID, I think our court was the only court that was really open and running compared to some of the other cities that really didn't do any of it. And so, we had some specific challenges that we had to do as a city, as a court, to even have that. And that's amazing that we were able to do what we were to do. So, I really don't have any specific recommendations, because I want to see what the committee comes up with for their evaluation. I know, I mean, I like, Joe, I like to know if they've made their budget. If they didn't make their budget, what are we going to do? We would have already heard about that, because they would have been asking for more money. So, I understand that, but I don't have anything specific. I'm just, I'm very excited that those said yes, and they're absolutely going to really do a great job, every one of them. Thanks, Lyman.
Other question?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to comment that I'm more interested in a narrative approach, maybe a summation of what they have, rather than us filling out a form, and mostly because we don't have firsthand observation. I know it's even a challenge when we're doing city manager and city attorney, so that would be my preference. I'm also interested in hearing what's been identified, the judge or the court has identified as community needs. For example, we have a high number of domestic violence and DUI cases, and so, how maybe we can, what the judge's vision is for integrating issues that she sees into some type of program or communication or something that where we can look at things, look at those issues holistically.
Randy?
Yeah. No, I agree. I think having the good cross-section of different people and doing the cross-section of surveys, the 360 survey is great as well. How is the courtroom observation done for that group as well? Are they, is this looking at old, the videos of the past, or are they actually physically in the courtroom observing during that time, small time period?
Combination of both. So, I think that ideally, they're in the courtroom. So, I think, given the window of time, I think we would look at courtroom participation or observation, and as necessary, I think if we have video available, I think they certainly could have that available to them. We could make it available to them.
And are the surveys volunteer and, you don't know who they came from? Or is it, not know who they came from, but if you're a staff member, you should probably be required to do a survey? Or is it just volunteer? I mean, I'd assume that we're going to get this COVID and non-COVID, we should get a certain amount of surveys every single time from every employee that we have.
Sure.
Is that true, or is it just? Is it just volunteer?
So, ideally, for staff, and I think each of the groups would be a little different. For staff, everybody would be included. Surveys would be anonymous. So, what we would deliver would be aggregate data that compiles the various groups. With attorneys, I think generally, I think they're taking a random sampling throughout the year.
Yeah.
I think to Councilmember Laura Tonno's point, I think at some point, you'd get to a place where every time someone's in court, they're getting a survey, and I think that would be the best-case scenario. So, for now, I think what we would be looking at is taking random sampling throughout the year of who's been in court and getting surveys out with the expectation of, and what I've seen in best practice is 50%, and where typically, you would have the Judicial Advisory Committee set a benchmark early on. We want to hit this number of survey participants, and that's what we would strive to achieve. But they're setting that benchmark in advance of sending the surveys out, and we're trying to hit whatever benchmark that might be in terms of participation.
Yeah, and I like these two other, I mean, however we decide to go about it, for every organization, I think in the city, I think looking at organizational managerial effectiveness and budget, it's just, it's good practice to have anyway. And I think to Wally's point, too, I'm going to be heavily relying on that committee, because I'm not, I might be able to observe the judge working, but I'm not sure all of how to be the best judge or the actual mechanics of how to do that, because I'm not a judge. So, yeah, relying on them will be really important to understand what's going on and what, if at least, at least the basics of being a judge are being met, which I assume they are, but the committee will definitely help the day-to-day things. But I know in some of our surveys with other department heads, we always say, "I didn't observe this or that." So, but yeah, but I think the organizational and the budget are important to add in there, or the components of that in the survey, however the surveys are created as well.
And you bring up a great point with regard to what's observable and what isn't, and I think that's a challenge both for the committee as well as council. So, as we start looking at operational and managerial areas, what is observable? I'm not sure that the committee is going to be able to assess those areas budget, for example, but certainly, I think council can assess, you know, the management of the budget. And through some of the surveys from the court staff, you could certainly assess some of those areas.
Yeah.
Again, I think that's always a question mark that we've had from council on some of the others, and I think we've honed in on that to try and eliminate areas that are unobservable. So, I think that's just a challenge that we would face as we would either get to having a form or not. I'm hearing two different thoughts on whether we would want to have a form or not. So, certainly like to try and hone in on direction with regard to a form.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
And Lyman, I think I'd expand. I think there's actually three options, if I may, and it would be to have us take information such as what John Elmo and create a form. It could be to ask the judge to provide a narrative format, you know, as far as accomplishments, challenges, you know, observations that she'd like council to know about. Or the third option would be to just let the committee do their work and bring the recommendation to council. So, I really think there's probably three options from what I see.
Well, never having seen it, Sherri, what does the survey look? I mean, is it really in detail? Is it long?
It's not very in detail. It's usually because you make it too many questions, nobody's going to return it.
That's what I'm looking at this thing, like, oh, what are you going to choose?
It's pretty much when you go to the voting, like, in November, the judges. If you go to the voting book, there's like three sections. That's from the survey. That is from the survey. One says litigants, one says, like, witnesses, one says, and it's maybe like four or five questions. And so, that's how Superior Court uses it for their judges, because they don't have one. Same thing when I did them for municipal courts, for several different municipal courts, it was always just a very short survey, filled it out, usually emailed it back, most of them, I think, are on email now, and it was only like four or five questions. I think that's the very short survey, and then, the other stuff like Bill was talking about could be in a narrative, and, because you really can't survey budget, you know? So, I think that's where the narrative comes in, is that other part, you know?
Here, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Lyman, aren't some of our committee members have sat on other?
Yes.
Like what we're asking them to do now? So, they'll know what questions worked and what questions didn't, and they're more qualified to figure out that question. I mean, Sherri is more qualified than me, because she's been filling them out. She knows what they ask.
And from a starting?
And they'll know, too. So, I mean, I'd like to let them do their work and then bring it back to us, and then let us take a look at it.
Certainly. And from a starting point, we've got surveys from the American Bar Association. So, we've got a starting point for them to begin to look at surveys, and based upon their expertise, we do have two presiding judges on the committee, so they've been involved in these processes before. They'll be able to provide some expertise and hone in on questions that have worked, what hasn't worked, and provide something that gives council an opportunity to make an informed decision with regard to the evaluation process.
Bill?
So, from a process perspective, I want to tackle a couple of questions. First is, you're suggesting a 360 evaluation of the judge.
In essence, that's what it is. I mean, you're trying to gather information from all aspects.
So, we don't do a 360 evaluation on any other charter member, any other charter officer in the organization. We don't do it for the manager, we don't do it for the attorney. Why are we doing it for the judge?
And this is a typical process for presiding judge or judges. So, how are judges evaluated? There's another element with regard to judges as well, and that's that judicial independence. So, there's certain areas that we should be evaluating and other areas that we shouldn't be. So, the aspect of doing a survey at least gives you that focus of what's happening in the courtroom, how are they making decisions? Are they impartial? It also gives you a picture into their administrative capacity, how they're running the court, and these are areas that sometimes are tough to observe. I think that's why council's decision to move towards a Judicial Advisory Committee was a smart one, because how do you understand what's happening in the courtroom and whether the judge is doing? And also, walk that fine line between judicial independence. We don't want to tell the judge how to do her job on the bench. However, there are aspects of what the judge does in the administration of the municipal court that certainly council would want to know about. So, how do we collate all this information and bring it to council in a way that you can make an informed decision? So, that's why that aspect of the 360 is used in this capacity versus the others, where you have more eyes on what the city manager's doing or the city attorney. So, that's the thought process behind the format, and this is a format that is used and also one that's recommended.
So, but if you were to take that same argument, you could apply that to the city manager, for example. You would want to know how he or she is managing all of their department heads. That gives you a feel for, you can take that to the nth degree, and you can start digging around through the 360 evaluation to find out how the managers really really managing, because all we get to see is the once-a-week affair. So I, I'm concerned about inconsistency on our charter officers. If we're not doing a 360 on all of them, I don't know that we should be doing a 360 on one of them. That's number one. Number two, the information here is not necessarily for us to judge. This may just be a tool for the advisory committee to look at the things to help us come to a conclusion of what we want to do with, with the judge. For example, we don't, none of us know what it is, with maybe the exception of Sherri, what it means to be a judge and how to, how to be, how to adjudicate cases. So we would certainly look to the advisory committee to say, are they, how are they as a ju-, a judge? And then we can look to other places to answer the other questions about the organization and about the budget. We could, that can be influenced by other places in the organization. We can get it through, you know, the employee satisfaction surveys, we can get it through other components. We could even ask the committee to look at these things. You know, they know the questions to ask to get to the answers for some of this stuff. It was never, we've never done the evaluation of the judge. I think Wally pointed that out. It's just been, come on in. Hey, nobody shot up the ju-, you know, nobody shot up the court, and everybody seems to be okay. Here's another 5%. See you next year. I mean, and that's-
Also hard to give suggestions.
Right.
And that, that part of it, so I, you know, so that to prepare them-
Correct.
-to be able to, be able to do that, because I remember a lot of questions answered, and then he gave us the political side. He was a nice guy. Don't get me wrong.
No.
But, but it, it didn't give us the information that we, that we needed.
That, that's my point of it was just shoot in the dark. Come on in, tell us, give us your narrative. Well, the narrative is always awesome. We have the same problem at Valley Metro with the CEO.
Well, I guess that's why the committee, I guess, when you talk about 360, sorry to jump in there, but when you talk about 360, are you talking about the evaluation or, or just the, the surveys, or what part are you talking about?
About all of it, because we're using the 360 evaluation, which is employees of the court and attorneys that appear before and other judge. We're, we're using all of that information to, to influence our decision on whether to retain or dismiss the judge.
And I don't know if employees are surveyed in other jurisdictions, like in Peoria or Phoenix. I don't know if they're actually surveyed.
That's a 360.
No, but I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I don't think, I've never heard that, so I don't know.
So, yes, key, key court members. So it varies at what level that they're surveyed.
Like Phoenix is not surveying every single bailiff and judicial assistant.
I'm, I'm not sure the depth, but others have staff surveys that they utilize as part of, as part of that process.
Okay, so that's what I guess I'm trying to figure out here. And then that's different than like the survey I was talking about. The survey I'm talking about is kind of what most courts use, you know? I, I don't want to go to the weeds, and then that would go to the committee-
Correct.
Who would just basically give us the executive summary of the information. So we're not redoing the wheel.
Correct. Right. And so what, what I'm driving at with all of this is, is to try to achieve some consistency among our charter officers, that we evaluate them as closely as we can. I realize the largest inconsistency is the fact that we have a judicial review committee, but that's just based on the nature of the position. I mean, if it, if it was, you know, we got to evaluate the city clerk, we would probably be able to figure out whether Darcy does a pretty decent job or not.
Don't worry, she's getting, she's got a stunned look. Don't worry. He's just-
You're the only one I can, the only one I can pick on.
That's an example.
But, you know, to, to judge and to, you know, adjudicate those cases is a skill that none of us could possibly possess. So I'm, I'm just concerned about that, number one. Number two is part of being a judge is running this, running the business of this court. We have to evaluate that. So to circle this whole conversation back to the beginning is if we don't have some sort of a tool and we're just expecting a narrative from the judge or a narrative from somebody else, we are going to have this exact same conversation whenever we do the evaluation, because we're going to be getting information download from everywhere without having any of it organized. And that's what the, that's what a tool does for us. It at least organizes it, at least break it down into some sections, not just, you know, the, you know, judge, I love you, but we just, your narrative is going to be wonderful. I guarantee it because you're writing it. How do we find out the rest of the story? And then for the rest of us to, to go, well, I don't believe this, or I don't, or I believe all of it, and I, you know, it-
Isn't that for the committee though, to put all that together and give us the-
Well, that's what I'm wondering. If we don't, if they don't come up with some system to effectively provide that information consistently, this is going to be a, I don't even have a politically correct term for it. It's going to be a mess every single time.
Councilmember Stip, or Vice Mayor Stip, great point of discussion, and I, I think you, you're, you're hitting the nail on the head with the, the nuance of this process in that the role of the committee, what do you want the role of the committee to be? Is the role of the committee gathering this information and bringing it to council with a recommendation?
Yes.
Either appoint-
That's it.
Reappoint or not. Now, that said, there are elements of what they do that we would dig into deeper. So budget, for example, and those kinds of things that they may not have, at least unless otherwise advised, they may not evaluate those things. So if you're looking for them to evaluate all aspects of the, the judicial evaluation process and bring that to you with a recommendation, I think that's something we can certainly design. There are some points of it that might be tough for them to evaluate. Again, when we talk about the management of the budget and those kinds of aspects, again, those things might fall into some kind of evaluation form that you would do. You get this information, it's going to give you a broad picture, and that's a piece of information that you have as council to go along with your evaluation of aspects that they may not be able to view.
So Lyman, other cities do the type of evaluation you're asking us to do?
There, there are different models out, absolutely.
So we're not making up something that doesn't happen?
No, this is, this is a-
Standard model.
Standard model, yeah, with the, the surveys that are out there. There are other models out there that, and, and these in my mind are a little tougher, where the presiding judge is evaluated like the other charter officers with an evaluation form.
Did we do that with the other judge? Did we have a form with the other judge? I don't remember. I don't think so.
We have not had a form for our presiding judge.
Well, okay, so we were treating him even differently from our city manager and our city attorney anyway, so what difference does it make? I mean, let's let the committee put it together and bring it back to us. Hopefully, you know, they'll know more what they're doing than we do.
You know, I still think it's important, whoever it is, whether it's Lyman, whether it's city manager, whether it's city attorney, you still got to evaluate for us to do our due diligence and be responsible as a city council, the organizational managerial effectiveness, especially with some of the data we talked about the last couple of council meetings. Again, maybe all, you know, it may be all explainable, but that's fine. But I, I think we relinquish our responsibility if we don't look at it. And that's what I'm going to need, for me, at least one piece when this thing gets done. Or I probably won't be able to have enough information to make the decision that you're asking of me. I'm just laying that out right now. I got to have all of it for me to be responsible, what I think is responsible to the citizens of Goodyear. Period.
Do you remember when I brought some concerns about our previous judge from residence?
I remember.
And I met with them hour after hour after hour while they shared their concerns with me, and I brought it to council, and because they didn't tell any of you, nobody really, we just blew it off and kept going, so.
And that was because we didn't have a process?
Well, we didn't have a process, and the judicial council is the one that, that really does the, no, what am I trying to say, Lyman? They're the ones that oversee, and they do the disciplinary, they do the discipline. It's not us at all. All we're going to do is just vote if we do the contract again. That's it.
So I, I think at the, the, the way the process is outlined, ultimately, they're going to make a recommendation to council, but council is going to either carry out an evaluation or make a final decision. So the, the decision lies with council as to whether or not-
To extend the contract or not.
Correct.
I get it. Okay.
But we will have the evaluations-
Yeah.
-the committee put together.
Ideally, the, the-
I, I don't want, you know, you, you never know who's going to be on council. It's all strange, and I don't want a wild hair in there deciding that they're going to know more than what the judge is know and what the committee knows. And, you know, people have this idea that they're the smartest and they know everything, and, and I don't want that. I want information. I want to be fair to the judge. I want to be fair to the people coming in. I don't want to hear them, okay? There's no reason for that. I want, I want the committee to be able to find out what their personality is, how they behave, how they talked, all the things in the meeting. It isn't just about drumming the questions out. It's finding out what they're like, what their personality, what their judgment is, if they have any prejudice, if they have, I mean, so we want a human being, okay? And I just don't want something that's presented that you're not going to get a human being, all right? You're just going to get someone that has a question answered and, and says exactly what you want to hear. I don't want that. I, I want to be able to have a group that can bring out that individual and how it is feelings are, his psyche. And I think that's a talent, and I'm hoping our committee will have that talent.
And Mayor, I don't think what you're saying and Bill's saying and Joe's saying is different than what I'm saying. It actually is all part of the same puzzle. It doesn't mean we do the committee and have the committee give us a recommendation, that we ignore the administrative and how we want to rate on those issues that are city-centered, like what Joe was saying. One does not preclude the other. In fact, it's all part of the same, and just because they say appoint or don't appoint, because this is obviously we have other judges, this might be an issue, you know, if you get five or six judges going here someday. It doesn't mean you have to follow. You look at their recommendation, you look at the documentation, and then you look at the other documentation and make your independent decision. So I don't think it says, we don't do that, or, you know, that's not important. It's just as important, and some of that information, the committee may not be fully in their paper, so we can get other sources for that. So I think everybody's saying the same thing, but a little bit differently. We're splitting hairs.
And so when you read those reports, do you get mentally, do you get kind of a general feeling about this person and their demeanor and their abilities?
If you want, a lot of the standard questions, just off the top of my head, are, are how do they treat the litigants? And that's a question for the attorneys, and that's also a question for the litigants, what, you know, fairly based on, you know, race, gender, whatever. Do they seem to know the law? How do they treat the juries? How do they operate their court? Is it, it's only like five or six questions.
Okay.
So, and I've only a couple times actually written lots of stuff. And if there's been a case where the judge didn't treat people fairly, I have written that and had specific examples. There's a couple that in 25 years I've written. Most people, I, you know, you see how they are on the, the bench. You don't see two different sides of a people. If someone is doing good on the bench, it's not a night and day with a judge. That, that the personality she has on the bench is the personality that they are. So it, it, you know, if, if, if they're cruel to people, the litigants, that will reflect all around. So I think that's one tool. So you, you look at, you look at the whole person, but it's a very short survey, that part that goes out, and then the committee can hone all that in, hone the narrative in. So I think we're all on the same page, and then the committee gives us the report and then any other documentation for finances and stuff that they may not be aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. It does. It does. It makes sense. And I, I guess what, absolutely. And what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, is there's, there are a few different pieces of the puzzle. I mean, there's a piece that the committee is going to bring you that you're going to take into consideration, but there's also the things that council-
The organizational piece.
-going to either evaluate in some way or observe.
Yeah. It looks like there's another layer of survey or whatever data points, either the organizational and the budget on top of the judiciary portion is totally separate from these type of things. How you, how you run your department and are you making budget? And I don't know if budget is necessarily a survey. It might be the finance department doing a quick little audit just to, just answering those questions. So, yeah. So there's some different things. I think there's different, different areas there to look at, so.
Well, if we're going to audit, if, if we're going to audit the judge, then we need to audit the city manager and the city attorney on their budgets, which we don't do. We get the budgets and, you know.
We do have our audit subcommittee. I'm just saying to answer that, the only way you'd answer the budget is by looking at it.
Well, yeah.
Whatever you want to call it, audit or looking at it, so.
Yeah. And I don't know that they do that.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be pretty simple, like, hey, yeah, they, they followed it. They, there's no money missing or whatever it is, so.
Then that means they have to look at their books.
Well, that's what we're kind of looking at here, so. Yeah, not an audit audit, just looking, so.
So.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, we have a lot of community stakeholders that engage the court, whether it's the, the litigants and the attorneys and things like that, and their input is, is valuable. That's the reason why the court is here, is to provide service to the public. And, and I think it is important, especially in the times we're in, that we just get a pulse of what's going on in our court and, and how people are feeling about it. But then there is the managerial, so it's a both and, and just figure out how you get the managerial needs met as well as the external feedback.
Okay, where are we? Did you get enough information?
Yeah, and, and if I could summarize what I've heard here, I think that there is a desire to have the Judicial Advisory Committee bring to council a recommendation and information that council can use, and council also would like to evaluate the managerial side of court operations, and that could be through a evaluation-type form that looks at criteria like what we've been presented here to make an ultimate decision. Does that-
Yeah, it's a summary.
Does, does it, does it capture it?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we always have a time when you yourself capture this in some kind of written form, that you're able to bring it back and let us take a look at it, and so we can understand it and, and picture what that would be like when the people are looking for a job in this position.
It would have been really helpful if we would have seen us, well, I don't even know if I should say survey, Lyman. That's not fair, because I'd like, I don't even know what a judicial committee does, and I don't know what another structure is. I've never seen one. You know, you can run around and get bylaws of committees, and you can figure out what the committee's doing, but I've never, you know.
And, and I think that the committee certainly would work on a survey. I have some samples of surveys-
Good.
-that, that will give you a sense of-
Oh, that's all right.
Do you have a copy?
But I, just very quickly, we do have some samples, and I think we-
Let me see what one looks like. That's a lot of questions.
This is, again, the committee, this is a template. So I really didn't want to get into the template to go down the rabbit hole, because I think this is where you're going to rely on the committee's expertise to come up with the survey.
Sure.
What questions are critical, but this would be a, a, a similar-type survey. And I think what's important is you're looking at integrity and impartiality. Those are some of the things that you're, you're asking. Communication, what are the communication skills, professionalism, temperament, administrative capacity. So you're going to be getting some of that information back on a, a survey like this. And that's just a sample. That would be a starting point for the committee to work on and gather, again, information to bring to council in a summarized format that you can use in the, in the evaluation process.
Thank you.
Yes, Brandon? Did you have a question? Any more questions on this? Any more? Okay, I think that we're, no? All right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I don't see there's any reason to continue this, but please keep us informed and the, and the name of those that are going to-